Okay. Open the meeting at 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Baker, Mr. Seaver, Commissioner Hanks not here, Mr. Gotti, Commissioner McGlue.
Yeah.
Anthony, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I need a motion to accept the minutes of the March 11 meeting. Anthony, second. Barb?
Mayor Baker, Mr. Seaver, Mr. Gotti, Commissioner McGlue.
Public announcement, Mark.
Be advised, this is pertaining to the MS4 sewer separation system, its inflow-outflow. It's an annual report that needs to be done by the city and will be published on our website very soon. Please be advised, the City of Mechanico hereby gives public notification that the City of Mechanico draft annual report as required by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, general permit and stormwater discharges from municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 operators is now available for public view and comment. You can find a copy of the report on the City of Mechanico website. All questions and comments should be directed to Commissioner Anthony Gotti, City Mechanico.
Thank you. Great, Commissioner reports. Basically, all I want to do is I want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, Clifton Park Avenue ambulance, the Water Department, DPW, and basically all city workers who have kept things going during this issue we're having. And I want to say to the public, stay safe and be healthy, please.
Just can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you been in touch with the county? I know you weren't earlier.
I actually am waiting for another call from them yet because if I knew what they were doing, I would announce it tonight, but we don't know that yet. I do know the City of Saratoga supposedly has extended.
Yeah, I read that yesterday or just morning.
But I don't know that for a fact either because I wasn't able to get hold of them. Commissioner Seaver.
I just a couple of things. First of all, there's a couple of resolutions. One, we did not send the water bills out in May as it usually is done for a couple of reasons. First, it was a staffing issue, and secondly, it was access to various accounts. The vast majority, we do electronically now, but there are a couple hundred accounts we need to gain access to, and it just wasn't under the circumstances, we didn't feel appropriate to be trying to get into those homes. If the resolution goes through tonight, we're going to have a June 1 billing date, but we're going to give two months to pay it to July 31. Hopefully, that time, some businesses will be able to ramp up, maybe people will get back to work, and it'll be just a little more comfortable for them to make their payments. The second one, there's another resolution in here. When this all started in the middle of March, the city has USDA small business funds available to it, and we got some money in the account. It's separate from the budget, it's not included in the budget. And we approached various, well, we pressed all the small businesses in Mechanico, told them what was available. It is a loan, it is a zero interest loan. We worked with USDA to change some of the rules. First payment isn't going to be required until October 1. And four, I think four businesses took advantage of it. Again, it is some debt, however, it allows them to get some cash flow and hope to keep them operational for, you know, through this whole thing. So I have.
Okay, Commissioner Gotti.
Couple of things I just wanted to go over as far as the MS4 that Mark was talking about. It's an ongoing project and a program that's under development. Right now, we're working in conjunction with Bartman Judas. We're training every Friday via the Internet to put the MS4 program fully in place. It's growing, growing very rapidly. I have Marty Garman heading it up. He's actually controlling most of the MS4. We had a hydraulic spill today, which just all came in handy. We were able to record it with the help of the Police Department and Fire Department. We were actively able to record it. Other than that, I'd just like to say thank you for everybody too for participating. I've had no sickness or no illness in my department. I'm very thankful for that. We've all teamed up, got this done together. It's not like it was a single entity, it was a part done on the entire committee and the commissioners within. I think everybody's done a wonderful job, and I'd like to say thank you for everybody's support. And the comment on Mark Seaver with the water, I just want to reiterate that I wasn't comfortable with entering any homes at this time with the pandemic. I didn't want to jeopardize my people, but also I didn't want my people contaminating any of the citizens by going into the home. Some of these residents, we have still not been able to get in the house or gain access because they haven't even allowed us in the homes yet. But I just wanted to reiterate on that so everybody's got an idea of why. Other than that, that's all I got right at this point.
Commissioner McGlue.
Yep, I have a couple of questions on some of the, a couple of comments, I guess, on some of the resolutions. 26-2020, the small business loans. The Express is getting a $5,000 loan. They are our newspaper of record. I'm just wondering if that's a conflict of interest?
I would say no, they're not.
Well, has anybody else asked for loans that would be a conflict of interest? I mean.
Yes, but I'm not going into any detail.
They're not, they're, they're.
No, they're not.
They're in contract with us or they're not.
They're in contract with us, that's why, you know.
Right.
I mean, I'm not really opposed, I don't care if they get a loan, I just think it's, it is a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I just want to put that on the record. And there's several resolutions that don't have any money attached to them. Frank Schaefer, there's no money listed what he's being paid. Marie Abraham, no money listed. Matt Dunn, no money listed. Donna Paluso, I mean, I don't know if she gets paid or not, but if she does, there's no money listed. Let me see if there's any other ones. I mean, I don't know why we're doing that. The public has a right to know.
I agree, it was just flipped off.
What people, well, it happened previous on other ones, and I complained about it. And also, I wanted to know if anybody in the City of Mechanico's employ is getting a paid furlough. We're one square mile, I don't know why anybody would get a paid furlough, I just want to know if anybody is getting one. Does anybody know if anybody is getting a paid furlough?
There's only one in the Police Department.
Why are we getting a paid furlough?
Because the chief requested it. He's trying to work with the person, is all I'm going to say. It's personal.
Well, I mean.
You don't get asked for this?
Is it in the person's contract that they could possibly get a paid furlough?
During this, you don't have to be in your contract, it can be because of it being declared emergency.
Okay, but we, I know we have an emergency.
Yep.
I'm well aware of it, but I don't see how the city could afford to give somebody a paid furlough when other people aren't getting a paid furlough.
Okay.
It's just not right, and it's not fair to the taxpayers. I really, I really have a problem with it.
Thank you.
And the, the secretary to the chief, or whatever the title is, has that test been requested yet?
It has been.
Okay, when was it requested, do you know?
I got, it's got to be at least a month ago, Barb.
Okay, so what is the title?
Secretary to the Chief, please.
And that's a new title, correct?
They put you out, the Civil Service put you out that it could possibly be, and that's the one that I put out.
Okay, so what grade is that?
I don't have the internet.
Okay, so with.
Full-time or part-time?
It's 29 hours.
Twenty-nine and a half.
So it's supposed to be four days a week with a police officer working on Wednesday.
Yep.
All right, so it's no secret, Civil Service has canceled all of their tests.
Right.
Who knows when this test is going to be given? It's, you know, I'm sure nobody else is going to want to have a test for secretary to the chief, confidential secretary to the chief. So you're probably way, way, way down on the list for Civil Service to issue a test for that job. That being said, it probably won't even be until October. There's so many tests that were supposed to be given and are all going to be rescheduled. You're looking probably nine months, 10 months before you even get somebody to accept the job, let alone have a two-month, what do you call it, when they.
Training?
No. When they, background check. It's going to take two months for a background check. We're going to pay an officer that whole time when we could just keep the person that does the job, knows the job, knows the people, knows the area, and we're going to let that person go and pay a police officer. This is what the City of Mechanico gets?
Okay.
How much is, how much does a police officer cost an hour?
A part-time officer? I don't have that in front of me right now.
It's got to be at least $20, right?
Somewhere in that area, I'd say eighteen something maybe.
Yep, and I don't believe the person that does the job now makes that much money now. So we are going to pay somebody more money to do a job that a person already knows how to do. And they could possibly collect unemployment because you're telling them, we have no work for you, it's a layoff. So now this person's going to collect unemployment for 26 weeks, maybe?
Possible, but also it comes in that if you're offered a job somewhere else, that could take away from it.
Yes, I realize that, but who's hiring right now? Who's going to hire?
The county.
The county?
Yeah.
These people have had a bona fide offer of employment in writing.
I don't know about writing, they didn't send it to me.
If it's not in writing, it's not bona fide.
I know they've been called and talked to about it, so.
Okay, but they have not been given a bona fide offer of employment because of that. So now, and what if they don't want to go? They don't have to accept that job.
Absolutely, don't have to, it's a choice.
Right, I'm sure that they're not going to be days, Monday through Friday, if you're low man on the totem pole. So now you don't even have to accept that job. So we're going to be responsible not only for paying a police officer, but for paying for that unemployment insurance.
Okay.
It just doesn't seem, does it seem reasonable to you guys that we do this?
The Sheriff's Department.
We've already, we've already passed the resolution.
Right, but we're having a pandemic.
Yeah.
That's why we're paid furlough, so rules can be broken.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Not necessarily, I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, we are, we're breaking rules, we're.
But we seem to lose the sight of.
The service this person can perform.
Well, we're focusing on one person, we're losing two people.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so if.
Either one.
Let's say, let's say replacing the one person, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but is a wash with the person, let's say it is, okay?
It isn't though, because a police officer gets more money than the person who are there.
Well, you're talking about benefits and everything else on top of it, full-time versus part-time, so.
Okay, so once that police officer works over 30 hours, what if we have a, they got to pay him benefits?
But I'm saying hospitalization, all that type of stuff.
Yeah, I realize that, that is a lot of money.
But, so let's say that's a wash in the ballpark. We're losing the paycheck of this, I'm talking about monetary. See, I didn't do this for the money. I did this because it's, to me, is the safest, smartest way to handle this whole thing.
So we're paying a police officer who is making, you are wasting a police officer to do a clerk's job.
First off, it's a part-time police officer.
Right.
You just keep saying police officer like you want people to think it's the more paid.
A police officer's a police officer.
I understand that, but it's a part-time officer that's going to fill that job.
Okay, they're still going to work there all day long.
Yep, absolutely.
And be a clerk.
Absolutely.
And be a clerk. That's what our police officers do.
But is this adding hours, is this adding hours to that officer's shift, or more hours?
Well, if that officer has to work, has to fill in for other people.
Shouldn't have to, we have a lot of people, but sometimes that happens.
Pretty often it happens, but I just don't see how this is.
What position are we comparing to a police officer? So I'm clear.
One of the dispatchers.
Yeah, dispatcher. You're going to make a police officer and as a dispatcher.
Yep.
All summer, God knows how long it's going to go.
Yep.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, is, okay, you have, it's a wash roughly with benefits and everything else for the one position, if you want to talk about saving money, you're saving money with the other position. You're losing a whole position, you're losing a dispatcher.
Okay.
I'm saying, so it's in terms of, if you're comparing one-on-one, okay, let's call, and I don't know the numbers, so let's call it just for the sake of our, a wash. With benefits and everything, it's about the same cost for that one position.
Yeah.
You're losing a second dispatcher.
Mm-hmm.
That's where you're saving, in this particular, in your particular scenario.
Okay, so we could be saving money by keeping the one dispatcher because it's going to be less money than the police officer.
I don't know if it is or not with benefits. I don't know if it is with benefits.
Okay, what if that police, what if that part-timer says, I don't feel like doing this anymore? What happens?
Get it on. Look, I've spoken to the chief more than once on this matter.
I have too.
And he has a plan in place to make this not only more efficient, but more economical for the city.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm willing to listen to the chief.
You can't, you can't sit here and tell me that it's going to be more economical to put a part-time police officer in that job rather than keep the person who knows the job. You're going to train that, you're going to train an officer to handle tickets and warrants and answer the phone? This is what that police officer needs to do? We don't have any crime around here? It's ridiculous.
Okay.
I should pay you.
And I also want to know, with this COVID-19, I know that the governor has issued an executive order that you get two weeks, which is 14 calendar days, not five, five and four, it's 14 calendar days, that you can be out of work without charging your time, you know, getting paid, it's, you know. But after that, some people have to charge their time and some people don't. So what is the ruling?
Well, per the executive order, per Jeff Honeywell.
You get 14 days.
Number one, yes, the FMLA.
FMLA is unpaid. All it does is protect your job and your safety.
You got to let me finish saying what I'm saying, though, okay? I try not to interrupt, I ask not to be interrupted. Without losing any time or anything, the cities are entitled to 80 hours, and without losing any time or anything, the FMLA will pick up an additional 80 hours, but it's only picking up medical and basically longevity, so you don't lose these things. There is no money attached to it.
Right.
The only ones I see that I know of that with that it would affect is if you were personally out from a doctor's slip or a doctor taking you out of work.
Right.
Because other than that, it would be the individual's choice to stay out or come back to work.
Right, I, that's, I realize that.
So when they cross, when they cross that road, that's where they would start charging their time.
Right, but things are not being treated the same. Some people are charging their time and some people aren't. It's, what is the ruling? Do they charge their time or do they not?
My understanding, it's you get 80 hours over two weeks.
It's 14 days.
And then, and then you, but 80 hours, you can get paid for it. This is my understanding, talking to our attorney, and.
Well, it's actually in print.
Eighty hours.
Of two weeks, which is two weeks, two full 40-hour weeks.
It's just indicated.
Days, I've never seen hours anywhere.
No, I've only seen hours, I've only seen days.
It's actually indicated right in the thing, if that money will.
Okay, so say it's 80 hours.
Eighty hours.
So that's two.
From the time you're called back, that's, the clock starts there. If you're out of work, sent home, you know, especially early on in this, we were told to compare this down to 50% at one point, that's why a lot of people got sent.
Right.
You're called back, and then you get 80 hours, and then you have to start using your time.
Well, that's citywide numbers too, so let's be clear on that, that's even all.
Citywide, not the department type of law.
Even the staff, the city hall, right? The city hall staff should have been down to 50%. I mean, Commissioner McGlue could have let Kim Noonie stay home, she could have worked the office. That's in compliance with the executive order. That has could have left Gina home, that's in compliance with the executive order. That's the way that's supposed to go. And the point she's making is, that part's accurate, very accurate. As far as the time charging, I guess the forgiveness under the executive order, that I understand, per Jeff Honeywell, that if you choose not to come back to work, if you have an underlying condition or something to substantiate that with doctors' proof, doctors.
Well, I need to see that in writing because I know people who were out sick, and I know people who were out sick. Some people had to charge their time and other people didn't.
Well, the only ones that I know of, like, I can speak for my department. If I had.
Don't get personals.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just speaking, generally speaking. If I have an individual working, okay, and they call in sick, that would charge their time. They're taking, they're taking themselves off.
I'm talking about two sick people. One person didn't have to charge their time, the other one did.
That's not, I don't know where you're seeing that.
I have it.
Show me, because that's not right.
I will, it's right here.
Show me that.
Sure.
Okay. Another thing is, what is the person getting paid at Civil Service?
Seven hundred, like, $760 a year.
Okay, so.
Twice a year to get paid, three something and three something.
Okay, so what are, is the job duties of somebody that works at Civil Service?
That job that we're appointing tonight, they oversee tests, they're a part of the whole.
They're like a monitor?
They're a board, they're a board.
They should charge you.
Okay, so.
They send out a board, it's two, three people on the board, one is the chairman, the chairman person, they get a little more money because there's more work involved.
Right.
The other two get $763, $783 a year.
All right, so.
They get twice a year.
Has there been any thought to just letting Saratoga County do our Civil Service?
There was thought when I first came on, but it never went anywhere. People didn't like the idea of that. If they're interested, we can talk about it after this.
Yeah, because I mean, if Civil Service, if the county Civil Service does it for nothing, why would we pay for it?
I don't know if they do it for nothing, I'd have to find that out.
There is some reimbursement from the school and from the housing authority.
Right, and that was why they didn't want to switch before because it was the school.
So I don't know what the net effect is dollar-wise off the top of my head, but there is, we do get paid from the school, we do get paid, I think, from the housing authority. I'm not sure about the library.
So what is Frank Schaefer being paid?
He's going to be step one of the PVA contract.
All right.
Marie will be step two of the PVA contract, and Matt Dunn will get this.
Yeah, but what is the?
I don't have that number here.
So we don't know what any of these people are getting paid?
Step one of the PVA contract.
Right, but we don't know the dollar amount.
No, I don't have that here. And Matt Dunn.
The dollar amount should be indicated in a contract for this, but.
Right, but it should be in a resolution so people see what they're getting.
And Matt Dunn will be paid the sergeant stipend that's in the PVA contract.
Right, I mean, Matt, we've, I've been asking about Matt Dunn for, I can't tell you how long.
Right, I know, and Donna Paluso is 700, seven odd dollars.
Seven odd dollars a year.
On the, on the Civil Service, so. All right? All right, you done with your questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Our resolution 2520, whereas on or about May 22, 2019, 96 to 100 North Main Street LLC and Valsavali petition pursuant to Article 78 of the New York CPLR against Kimberly Dunn, records officer in the City of Mechanico, one compelling compliance with two separate FOIA requests that were filed on March 14, 2019, and April 11, 2019, and two awarding petitioners with litigation expenses and attorney's fees pursuant to Section 89 of the New York State Public Officers Law. And whereas on June 14, 2019, respondent Kimberly Dunn in the City of Mechanico submitted its response in opposition to the petition, whereas Justice Buchanan of the New York State Supreme Court, Saratoga County issued a decision and order dated August 28, 2019, awarding petitioner 96 to 100 North Main Street LLC and Valsavali, finding that the respondent Kimberly Dunn in the city did not comply with the obligations under the Public Officers Law, ordering that the documents requested by petitioner be provided and granting reasonable attorney fees and costs to petitioners to be determined by late submission. And whereas on March 10, 2020, petitioners 96 to 100 North Main Street LLC and Valsavali provided notice of entry on February 29, 2020, decision and order of Justice Buchanan awarding reasonable attorney fees in the amount of $2,560 to be paid by the City of Mechanico. And whereas on March 10, 2020, the city also received petitioner 96 to 100 North Main Street LLC and Valsavali's request for statutorily authorized costs and disbursements pursuant to New York CPLR in the amount of $855, which include the filing fees, process of survey, statutorily set costs and subsequently submitted, and affirmation inserting these costs and disbursements. Now therefore, be resolved that the accordance with the decision of the order of Justice Buchanan pursuant to the CPLR and the council approves payment of the amount of $3,505
five hundred and five dollars to ninety-six, one hundred North Main Street LLC and Val Ceballos to be paid no later than the close of business on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty. I'll introduce.
I'll second.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes, this is a court order.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it doesn't matter what you call it.
All right. Resolution twenty-six twenty, whereas the city of Mechanical has received funding from the United States Department of Agriculture Business Enterprise Grant Program for the purpose of establishing a citywide revolving loan program for small businesses within the city. Whereas the city has reached out to small businesses within the city, alerting them to the availability of these funds to help them survive the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the following businesses have been awarded funds for their small businesses, Split Ends, five thousand dollars, Ugly Rooster, ten thousand dollars, Golden Plus Bakery, ten thousand dollars, and the Express, to five thousand dollars. Now therefore, be resolved, the city council approves the payment of the above loan to be paid back over five-year period at zero interest. I'll introduce.
Second.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Epstein.
Whereas the police department is in need of a full-time police officer and whereas Frank Schaefer has been, has experience in the field and is willing to start immediately, now therefore be resolved that mayor is authorized to hire Frank Schaefer as a full-time police officer effective May fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Step one PVA contract.
Step one PVA fund.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Whereas the police department is in need of a full-time police officer and whereas Marie Abraham has experience in this field and is willing to start immediately, now therefore be resolved that the mayor is authorized to hire Marie Abraham as a full-time police officer effective May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, at the second-year patrol rate as it appears in the PVA contract.
Step two.
Step two, right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Anthony?
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-nine twenty, whereas the police department is in need of a police sergeant and whereas Matthew Dunn has passed civil service test for sergeant and is currently listed first on the civil service list, is willing to start immediately, now therefore be resolved that mayor is authorized to promote Matthew Dunn to the rank of sergeant effective immediately.
Mark. I'll second it.
Mayor Baker, Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Whereas there's a vacancy on the city of Mechanical Civil Service Commission, now therefore resolved that the city council of the city of Mechanical appoints Donna Peluso for a six-year term on the, to the city of Mechanical Civil Service Commission, which will begin May fourteenth, two thousand twenty, will expire May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-six. I'll introduce.
At the salary of--
No, at the salary of approximately seven hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Okay. Mark, you made the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Epstein.
The next two, I'm just going to try to summarize. Thirty-one twenty, it's a resolution advertised for bids for the CB, TDBG water system improvements. I guess there's some water system improvement, water mains going to be replaced on First Avenue, Elizabeth Street, Mechanic Street, Penrose Avenue, Fitchburg, Gilbert in the city of Mechanical, we received a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We are approving the documents of general construction and water systems to go off the bid.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Again, these are just, they're just authorizing the bid on these projects. Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows too, that's the improvement on some of the systems that we have actually been looking at, we're calling, which is replacing, it's basically going to stabilize the whole infrastructure.
Resolution thirty-two twenty, the city of Mechanical is going to authorize advertisements for bid on the parking lot on North Main Street and the section in front of the firehouse, that the concrete section in front of the firehouse. There are two grants outstanding to take care of these, both through the dorm, the New York State Dorm Authority. One is for just the parking lot, the other, I guess it's a grant we have with the community center that's going to allow us to pave in front of the parking--
The firehouse.
Firehouse. Now, I just, and this, the bid authorizes us going out the bid, I just want to caution one second. I've been working with DASNA, especially on the one grant on the parking lot. We, while all the paperwork is in, we haven't got a letter saying we're, we're getting the money immediately, okay? I want to move cautious, you know, go to bid, but before we spend any money, I think it's--
Oh, absolutely.
We get commitment from DASNA.
Absolutely.
I've been talking with DASNA over the last couple of weeks, they're all working from home as well, they don't have access to a lot of the information that they would if they were in their offices, so it's going to be a little bit before we hear, hear anything. And so I just want to caution everybody on that. I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yeah.
All right. Resolution thirty-four twenty, again, it has to do with retaining Barton La Judas at a rate of ten thousand dollars.
Did you miss thirty-three twenty?
Yes.
Did I?
Yes, bottom of the--
Thirty-three. Drainage improvements.
Three more drainage improvements. On the bottom of this.
I think the last line on the bottom.
Oh, there, I'm sorry, you're right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I put them together. Again, this is a grant we received for the work being done on the drainage project. What happened is, I believe, we have, we didn't, we didn't exceed the amount of money we received on the portion on South Central Avenue, so we are, been allowed to do some work on North Central Avenue, drainage work on North Central Avenue. This basically allows us to reappropriate the money from, from use on South Central Avenue to use on North Central Avenue.
Yep.
I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Five more.
Five more. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver. Yes. Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
All right, now, again, I'm going to read this one. Whereas the city of Mechanical is mandated to comply with the New York State Rules and Regulations Regarding Stormwater Control and Illegal Discharge, whereas engineering services are required to assist in effectuating compliance with the applicable, applicable rules and regulations, whereas Barton La Judas DPC, as a designated city engineer, has completed these services to date for the city. Whereas Barton La Judas has submitted a proposal to provide these services for a fee of not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved, the city council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign a contract for not to exceed the amount of ten thousand dollars. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately. And I'm told that's for the balance of this year and for next year. It's ten thousand dollars.
And just so everybody knows, that's the training, yeah, well, the training that we're doing with Nadine is through Barton La Judas, and it's quite critical at this point. She's actually the go-to person that's helping develop. And she's kept us from getting fines for an MS four program that was behind. So she's done a wonderful job as far as I go, she's got a lot of training done, and we're getting a lot of guys up to speed on a listed discharge, is what you're talking about. That's the hydralisk goal I was talking about earlier, so, yeah. Very important.
I need a motion.
You make an emotion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-five twenty, whereas the city of Mechanical is completing a drainage improvements project known as the Central Avenue Drainage Improvement Project, whereas engineering services are required to assist in effectuating compliance with the applicable rules and regulations as the project is funded by CDBG and New York State Department of Transportation. Whereas Barton La Judas, as a designated city engineer, has completed these services to date for the city, whereas the contractor's schedule has been delayed to various reasons, including COVID-19 material delivery delay and weather delays. Whereas Barton La Judas has submitted a proposal to provide additional construction observation services for not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, now therefore resolved, city council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign a contract amendment for not to, amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, and further resolve that the resolution be taken effect immediately. This money will come out of the grant. So it's, I need a resolution.
Yes.
Second.
You second it?
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six twenty, whereas the city of Mechanical sends water bills to the city water customers on May first and October first of each year, whereas due to the COVID-19 virus obtaining water meter readings and preparing the bills due to lack of staff and accessibility to properties to get the water meters reading made, meeting the May first, two thousand twenty billing date of virtual impossibility. Now therefore be resolved, this Mechanical City Council is authorizing distribution of water bills to the city water customers to occur honor before June first, two thousand twenty, and allow the water customers to have until July thirty-first, two thousand twenty to make their payments without penalty. This authorization is for the first billing cycle of two thousand twenty only, will not change further billing periods unless city council take additional action to authorize such change. I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven twenty, whereas Article eleven A of the New York State General Municipal Law requires a list of members of the fire department must be certified under oath by the fire department indicating a service credit during the calendar year. Whereas once completed, a list of members must be presented to the city council for approval of services. Now therefore be resolved that the city, Mechanical City Council hereby approves the volunteer firefighter service or program list to all two hundred, two thousand nineteen active volunteer firefighters of the fire department. And again, this is the low sap program, which is the retirement program for the volunteer firemen.
Yep.
I'll introduce.
I'll second.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti, Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-eight twenty, this is the resolution of general payroll, general water, sewer, capital projects, the amount of three, three hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And we're expenditures below the general water sewer capital project payroll funds of two million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Now therefore be resolved, be it resolved that said payroll vouchers are hereby allowed in order to be paid. I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes, Commissioner Gotti.
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire.
Epstein.
Really?
Do we have any new business?
We got--
Any old business? Have a motion to adjourn then.